Good evening. Welcome to Charter Township of Van Buren Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, September 25th, 2019. We'll start with a roll call, please.
Jeff Jar.
Here.
John Pointon is excused. Brian Kelly is excused. Medina Atchinson?
Here.
Sherri Budd?
Here.
Joan Fransway?
Here.
Carol Thompson?
Here. Thank you so much. We have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Commissioner Jar. Support Commissioner Fransway. Any additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of approving say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the agenda's approved. We have minutes from the regular meeting of Wednesday, August 28th of 2019. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Take motion from Commissioner Jar. Support Commissioner Budd. Any changes to the minutes? All in favor of approving the August 28th minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved. Tonight's meeting, we have several public hearings to get us started. The first one is a rezoning, item number one. Applicants Jody Einfeld and Guy Menyard are requesting to rezone their property located at 791 Savage Road and at 13720 Martinsville Road respectively. The rezoning is from M1 Light Industrial to R1B Single Family Residential. The subject property at 791 Savage Road is parcel ID 83-105-99-0054-000. And at 13720 Martinsville Road, the parcel ID is 83-105-99-008, I'm sorry, 0008000. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Atchison, support?
Support.
Commissioner Jar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the, any opposed? No. The public hearing is now open. We'll start with a presentation by the applicant, and then we'll hear some comments from the planners and also from the audience. If you'd like to speak to this agenda item, and we encourage you to, come up to the podium, please tell us your name and address. And if you would keep your comments specific to this agenda item, there will be a chance to speak on other agenda items later on in the evening. First, we'll start with, I guess, do you both want to come up at the same time? Okay. We're considering them together because of your special circumstances, so. Anything that you have to tell us this evening?
Hi. My name is Jody Einfeld, and I'm at 791 Savage Road. This was a family home, and it was actually my grandmother's property way back in 1903, I think they bought it. So this home means a lot to me because after World War II, Mom and Dad were given the property by Grandma, and Dad physically built the house with his hands. Somewhere like in the eighties, it got switched to half and half. And now that I've got it again, I would really like it all back to residential. If it should ever burn down, I don't know if I can rebuild because it's half and half. And certainly if, when I die, my children sell it, what are they going to do if it's half and half? So I would really pray that you put it back to residential.
Sure. We understand the circumstance. In the whole neighborhood, it's been sort of scattered zoning that don't really fit the use. So I think we're all trying to rectify, make sure that things get cleaned up to serve you better and to make sure your property is protected. Thank you.
My name is Cindy Menhart. I'm the wife of Guy Menhart. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here today. I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to have our property rezoned to residential. My husband and I have lived here for 30 years. And although we're not planning on selling it because we love Van Buren Township, and we're planning on staying, in the event that, you know, we're both getting older, and in the event that something should happen and we have to leave the home for maybe extended care, this is very good for us to have one step at least expedited so that if we needed to sell the home quickly, we wouldn't have to, have to go through everything. So I really appreciate all of your efforts to have it rezoned residential. And I feel bad that more people didn't take advantage of this offer because it is a very, very good offer that, you know, that you're extending to us. So thank you very much, and I do hope that you rezone us residential.
Okay. Thanks so much. We'll hear the recommendations from our planners now.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As mentioned, we have reviewed a request from the two property owners located at 791 Savage Road and 13720 Martinsville Road to rezone their properties from M1, which is Light Industrial, to R1B, which is Single Family Residential. The properties have an approximate area of one acre each. Now, the property that is located on Savage is actually a split zone property. The front portion of the parcel where the house is located is actually R1B, and the rear portion of the parcel is M1. Whereas all of the parcel on Martinsville is actually zoned M1 district. Now, many of the properties in the vicinity have recently been rezoned by the township from industrial to single-family residential. So the township sent a letter out to all the residents in the Martinsville and Savage Road area asking them, offering them a one-time opportunity to rezone their properties, and the township will not charge them anything for it. The township will facilitate the rezoning. We sent multiple reminders. We got only five people respond, and out of them, only the two applicants actually turned in an application. I repeatedly sent reminders telling them that the township is facilitating this, but the two property owners were the only one who were keen on progressing to the next step. So at this time, we are processing the two of those applications together. The ordinance has several standards based upon which we review any request for rezoning, and the most important being in conformance to what the master plan recommends. There are several standards. I'll go over these in brief. Now, consistency with the goals, policies, and objectives of the master plan and any sub-area plans. It is important for a proposed rezoning to match up to that. Now, the South Side Master Plan of 2007 and the Future Land Use Plan Map for 2018 both designate the property as Village Residential. And according to the plan, Village Residential is intended to be the densest area of single-family residential housing on the south side, and it is intended to support civic and business activities in the nearby city of Belleville. So you have businesses, they are supported by the residential homes in this area. The designation is within half a mile of the city limits and has single-family residential uses. Now, the maximum recommended density for Village Residential is 4.1 to 5 acres per unit with a minimum lot size of 8,400 square feet. Now, the Village Residential designation, if you match it up to what is in our zoning ordinance, it's actually R1C zoning district. However, this entire area currently has only R1B zoned properties. Considering that one of the properties is split zoned, it makes no sense to rezone a portion of the property from M1 to R1C and now have it still split zoned into two residential districts. The township has consistently rezoned all of these parcels to an R1B designation because it matches what currently exists in the area, and that is the proposal. I would like to make a note that while both parcels do meet the minimum lot area requirement for the R1B, which is 10,000 square feet since they are one acre each, the minimum lot width required for R1B is 80 feet. The parcel that is on Savage has got a lot width of only 51.3 feet. It will not meet the minimum lot width requirement for the R1B. In fact, it will not meet the minimum lot width requirement for any single-family residential district. But this is an existing legal nonconformity, and it should not affect the applicant's ability to use this as a residential parcel. Consistency with the basic intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. Now, the intent of the zoning ordinance is to regulate land use in a safe and sound manner so that development is in keeping with what is around it and protects public health, safety, and welfare. The existing zoning of the properties is M1 Light Industrial, and the Light Industrial District basically is intended to allow certain industrial and commercial uses but have a limitation on the light, smoke, glare, and other stuff. It's actually meant to be a transition zone between heavy industrial and non-industrial areas. Now, the uses that are actually permitted in an M1 district are in no way compatible with what actually exists over there at this time. Now, the R1B Single Family Residential District, on the other hand, is intended to permit single-family dwellings, publicly owned recreational facilities, local government buildings, schools, swimming pools, accessory buildings, and anything related to single-family and residential-based uses. We believe the uses that are allowed in the proposed residential district are compatible with what currently exists over there. The parcels have frontage onto Savage and Martinsville Road, and residential use generates minimum traffic compared to an entire subdivision or a commercial or an industrial development. So the rezoning is not going to alter or create any extra additional load onto the abating roadways. The properties are currently served by the township's utilities, and no changes are proposed, so there'll be no additional burden on the township's ability to provide those utilities. The proposed rezoning is not to correct an error in adoption of a zoning map. Sometimes a rezoning is done if they think there has been a map error. This is actually to make a correction based upon the existing patterns of development in an area. The amendment will not result in exclusionary zoning. Exclusionary zoning basically means prohibition of a land use when there is a demonstrated need for the use in the community. There are a lot of R1B zoned parcels in the township, just as there are a lot of M1 zoned parcels. So by rezoning it from M1 to R1B, we are not excluding any use or zoning from the township itself. The properties are being used residential, and they are not expected to alter the overall environmental features or factors or create any additional impacts. Both uses, as I mentioned, are currently residential. We don't believe the use will generate any additional negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood about what currently exists in the area. If the rezoning is requested, we believe the proposed requested zoning district is more consistent than any other zoning district, and we believe that is true. As I mentioned, rezoning it to R1C will not make sense because then some parcels will remain R1C, others will be R1B and M1. So of all the zoning districts that we could rezone it to, the township has found R1B to be the most appropriate zoning based upon the current pattern of zoning and development. The parcels are in the area of residential dwelling units, and this will not create an isolated or an incompatible or a spot zone anywhere. So at this time, based on our review of this proposal and of similar proposals that the township has acted on in the past couple of years, the rezoning is intended to correct a zoning situation in an area where the homeowners intend to continue living in their properties as single-family residential uses. So we believe it meets the ordinance sections, the test set by the ordinance sections 12.504A through K, and it is a recommendation that the Planning Commission recommend to the Township Board of Trustees to rezone both these parcels from M1 to R1B Single Family Designation.
Great. Thanks very much, Ms. Krishnan. Questions or comments from the commission? Questions or comments from the audience? Anyone on this agenda item? Right. Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Budd, support Commissioner Atchison. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the public hearing is now closed. Don't go away. You're just another public hearing, and then we're back to you on the agenda. I think things will move fairly quickly here. Next item on tonight's agenda under public hearing is a rezoning. The applicant Judy Pendegrass on behalf of DTE Associates is requesting to rezone the property located at 8001 Hagerty from C1 General Business to M1 Light Industrial. The subject property is parcel ID 83-046-99-0001-702. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Atchison, support?
Support.
Commissioner Jar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And thanks. Same rules of the road as last time. If you'd like to, we'll have the applicant speak to this agenda item. If you'd like to respond or have questions or comments, come up to the podium, tell us your name and address. If there are other items on the agenda you want to speak to, you'll have a chance to do that later. But right now, we'll hear from the applicant, please. Great.
Good evening. My name is Steve Gethert. I'm an architect with Newman Smith Architecture, Southfield, Michigan. I'm here representing DTE this evening for the rezoning of this parcel. The reasons we're looking for rezoning are fairly straightforward. First of all, we'd like to have our entire parcel the same zoning. Second of all, it's consistent with the master plan for this area. And also, we've combined this, our new parcels with the existing Western Wayne Service Center for various reasons that we'll get into during site plan approval. And we felt it would be advantageous to have all of that the same M1 zoning. So I would just like to point out that the parcel that we are asking to rezone is only the little narrow area that extends from Hagerty back. It's about 80 foot wide. If you've gone down Hagerty and you see the woods that's right there, it's only about half of that width. We are not planning on developing that right now. The original thought was that would become a driveway or maybe underground utilities to feed a new service center. I'm sorry, a systems operation center. And we found out because of the topography and the wetlands in there that it was more beneficial for us to actually use the driveway at the Western Wayne Service Center and just leave that parcel alone. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have or anyone else might have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll hear the recommendation from McKenna Associates, please. Ms. Krishnan.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We reviewed an application by DTE Alternate Systems Operations Center to rezone the parcel that Mr. Gethert showed over there. It's a narrow sliver of a parcel. They would like to rezone it from C1 General Business District to M1 Light Industrial. The main parcel, almost the entire DT facility, is zoned M1 with the exception of this narrow band that is approximately 82 feet wide and 595 feet deep and has an area of 6.53 acres. This parcel is a vacant wooded area. To its south is an existing single-family home and part of three parcels that happen to be zoned ag, estates, agriculture, and estates. To its south, there's just a cluster of three, although the use of some of those parcels is nonconforming at this time. To their north, once again, is a vacant parcel, and to the east is the wooded M1 DT parcel itself. Based on the ordinance standards, I'll go slightly more in detail over this so the Planning Commission has an idea of what exactly the applicant is proposing to do with this rezoning. The master plan designates the subjecting site and the abating parcels to the north, east, and west as Office Light Industrial District. The proposed M1 zoning designation is consistent with the vision of the master plan, more so than the current commercial zoning of the parcel. The M1 district is intended to support light industrial and office type of uses while providing easy access with proximity to the freeway and the interchanges. The existing uses in the area and the development trends that we have seen recently down the Hagerty Road corridor clearly indicate the need for light industrial and not a sliver of commercial use in the middle of an industrial corridor. Now, the intent of the zoning ordinance, as I mentioned in the previous case also, is to regulate the use of land in a sound manner, protecting public health, safety, and welfare. Now, the parcel we are looking at is 82 feet wide. If it were ever to be developed for commercial purposes, it would be really challenging. Because by the time you have your green belts, you have your access drive and everything, the building that you can fit on there is going to be very unusual, if not impossible. Plus, it would require a significant removal of woods, parking, because commercial uses tend to be more parking-heavy in order to be viable compared to a use like this. At this time, the applicant is just rezoning it as they mentioned so that they can combine and keep all of their parcels M1, and there is no proposal to make any changes to it. The parcel will continue to remain wooded. The only change is the zoning is changing from C1 to M1. The site's frontage along Hagerty Lane has got two lanes in each direction, no center lanes. However, just north of the site is the deceleration lane that goes up to Ecorse Road, which leads to the ramp to 275 South. So it's not conducive for commercial uses because between the DT's main facility over there, across the street that is industrial, further down the road, you have the chase, you have a new data center. The kind of traffic this road already has, a commercial traffic with vehicles of customers and patrons, is not something we would like to see in this area. It wouldn't be a safe location for it either. Although there are no plans to build on this parcel, we don't believe there is any constraints for sewer or water capacity in the area. The township has enough facilities, should it be needed, to provide the necessary facilities for this property. This rezoning is not being requested to correct a map error. That C1 parcel was probably created a long time ago, at which time the pattern of development in the township was entirely different. It has so remained, and DT has owned the parcel for a long time. But at this time, with the building of their new support facility, the backup data facility, they are just trying to clean up their property, combine all the parcels, rezone it, and just clean up the background of this parcel. The amendment is not going to result in any exclusionary zoning. There are other viable C1 parcels located in many places within the township, just as there are M1 parcels also. The applicant's request is merely to correct a split zoned parcel, which DT is never going to build a commercial development on there, nor is it a viable commercial parcel, so this really makes sense. With regard to the site's environmental factors and features, it is a vacant wooded lot. According to the Michigan MDEQ's Vetland Viewer Map, a significant portion of the site is covered in hydric soils. And there is also some wetlands on the eastern edge of the parcel close to it. Although according to FEMA maps, it is designated as an area of minimal flooding, any development on there will be challenging. By the time you take care of all the wetlands and wetland mitigation, it's, it would be an expensive parcel to develop at that size. The permitted uses in the M1 district are numerous, and they are in keeping with what you see down on the Hagerty Road corridor. These are light industrial slash office-based uses. As a side note, the applicant is also seeking site plan approval at this time for the construction of a new alternate systems backup center, which will go on the already M1 zoned portion on the back of the property. They are working on their site plan, and they will be before you in the month of October, seeking preliminary site plan approval. If the rezoning is requested, the district would be contiguous to other M1 zoning, so we are not creating a spot zone. It would actually just continue the M1 zone pattern that already exists to its south. There is that isolated pocket of agriculture and estates parcel, which actually has the limo company on it and a couple of homes. So those are existing nonconforming uses, why not? But as long as they remain, they can continue to stay over there. If the rezoning is requested, we believe it is a reasonable request, and the market tends to indicate that industrial uses Van Buren is very viable for, especially along this corridor. While we are very protective of our residential neighborhoods and creating residential landscape buffers, we strictly regulate those, the areas that are right next to the freeway with close access to the freeway have typically been more popular with industrial development. If the rezoning is requested, it is not going to create an isolated or an incompatible zone in the neighborhood. So based upon the ordinance standards that are set forth in sections 12.504A through K, we believe the applicant's request to rezone the property from C1, which is General Business, to M1 Light Industrial meets the test of the ordinance. It would be a recommendation that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Trustees to rezone this parcel as requested.
Great. Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the audience on this agenda item? From the commission? Anyone? Anything else from the applicant at this time?
No, thank you.
All right. Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Atchison, support?
Support.
Commissioner Fransway, I'll take. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And so the public hearing is closed, and we are going to move right into new business, and we are going to look at both of these rezonings that we just had public hearings on. So item number one will be Jody Einfeld and the Menhart home requesting to rezone their properties at 791 Savage and 13720 Martinsville from M1 Light Industrial to R1B Single Family, same parcel IDs as with the previous agenda item. Anything else from the applicants at this point? It's pretty straightforward. You've been very forthcoming, and I appreciate it. Anything else from the commission at this point? Anything, Ms. Krishnan?
No.
All right. Is there a motion? This would be a recommendation to Township Board.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Atchison.
I move that we grant recommendation to the Board of Trustees that the applicants are requesting rezoning. The applicant is Jody Einfeld, sorry, and the Menhart home are requesting a rezoning of the properties located at 791 Savage Road and 13720 Martinsville Road from M1 Light Industrial to R1B Single Family Residential. For the record, I notate that we capture the McKenna letter dated September 18th, 2019 that was written by Ms. Kushner.
Kushner.
Kushner. And that we make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Jar, thank you. And this will be a roll call vote, please.
Joan Fransway?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Medina Atchison?
Yes.
Sherri Budd?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes. So you've certainly passed the lit, Miss Test from the Planning Commission point of view, which is certainly a hurdle. It goes to the Township Board with our full recommendation and backing now. And staff will be able to tell you when it comes to the planning, or I'm sorry, to the Township Board agenda, but I would assume it would probably be within the next few weeks here, so. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for making.
The.
Madam Chairman? Go right ahead.
The Township Board of Trustees is the final decision-making body on a rezoning. However, on planning matters like this, they always take into consideration the recommendation of the Planning Commission. And yours is not the first rezonings in this area. They have done multiple and recommended approval of multiple other ones. So I would feel comfortable to say the Board of Trustees would actually support the Planning Commission's recommendation on this one. And I don't know which agenda it is on because Elizabeth, who sets the agenda items and puts together, is not here tonight. But I will check with her, and I will let you know which meeting that will be at.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Vidya. Thank you. Moving on to our next item under new business, also a rezoning. This is the DTE requesting to rezone property located at 8001 Hagerty from C1 General Business to M1 Light Industrial, same parcel ID as before. Anything else from the applicant? Audience? Commissioners? In that case, is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
All right. Commissioner Atchison?
We don't have Brian Kelly here, so I guess I'm gonna have to earn my pay.
You're in the chair tonight.
Madam Chair, I, I move that we make recommendation to the Board of Trustees that we grant the applicant Judy Pendengrass on behalf of DTE. I'm sorry, Mr. Steve Gethert?
Gethert.
Gethert?
Yes.
So I'm sorry, my notes say Judy, but I remember you came to represent. On behalf of DTE is requesting the rezoning of the property located at 8001 Hagerty from C1 General Business to M1 Light Industrial, that we are making a recommendation to the Township Board for consideration of this rezoning. And I also want to notate for the record that we're capturing the McKenna letter dated September 18th.
Support?
Support.
Commissioner Fransway? Thank you. And this would be a roll call vote, please.
Sherri Budd?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Fransway?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes.
So thanks very much for your time tonight, and same as with the other two. So, thanks very much for your time tonight and same as with the other two rezonings. It'll come up to the Township Board in probably a very recent, or soon, meeting and staff will be able to confirm with you what that date is. Thank you very much. Still under New Business, item number three is the request for scheduling a public hearing for a master plan amendment at 41620 East Huron River Drive, a future land use. The applicant Scott Jones is requesting an amendment to the Township's future land use map to change future land use designation from medium density, single-family A, to multiple-family residential to construct detached condominiums on the property. Property is located at 41620 East Huron River Drive. That is the north side of East Huron River Drive and adjacent to Edison Lake Road. Right, I think what we have on the agenda tonight is just to set the public hearing, but I would be happy to hear if there are comments or questions from the audience or from the Commission before we do that. Anyone on this agenda item? Commissioners. So we have the memo from Matt Best, our Director of Public Services, and the memo includes a whole series of actions and proposed timetable for how this master plan amendment can move forward and we are about halfway through. We have the, we are in the 42-day comment period that was sent out to surrounding communities. Once that comment period is finished, then we can have a public hearing here at the Planning Commission and then see what goes forward from there. Are we actually, are we asking staff to set a planning, a public hearing date or are we setting the specific date?
I believe the timeline has got a specific public hearing date on it, but.
October 23rd.
October 23rd, I believe it is. So if you would set it for a public hearing, I'll make sure the notification gets in the papers. It's completing the 42-day period. It's just been a long process with multiple times Planning Commission, and it will keep coming back to you for a long time to come, so.
Are we still within the 42-day comment period or have we passed it?
I think the notification has been sent out and this is the time for communities to give us.
We're still within the responding time period.
We are within the respond time, right.
It was mailed on August 5th, so 42-day period would be September 5th. We would be completing the 42-day period anytime now, probably by the end of November.
Have there been any comments so far?
No, we have received none in writing. I did check that Matt and Elizabeth, we have received no comments from anybody.
Excellent, thank you.
In that case, I'll be looking for a motion to set the public hearing for the Planning Commission meeting on October 23rd. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair? I move that we grant an open hearing, I'm sorry, recommend it to the Board.
This would just be for us.
Oh, I recommend that we open the public hearing to discuss the applicant Scott Jones requesting the amendment to the Township's future land use map to change the property to be completed for October 23rd, 2019.
Great. And support? Commissioner Fransoy. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And so we're set for our public hearing. Great, thanks so much. We are to general discussion tonight. Anything from staff for general discussion?
No, Madam Chairman.
Anything from planners? Anything from the Commission under general discussion? Anybody? And the audience, anyone for general discussion items? Yes, sir.
My name is Chuck Reavis and we live at 1043 Savage and we had not applied for this.
The rezoning?
Rezoning.
Okay.
And we were wondering, is it too late to do that or?
No, it's not too late. You still could apply anytime you choose to. It's just that now the application fee will be applicable.
That's what I meant, it's too late for the.
For, I can run it by Matt Best one more time. He's the Director of Public Services. So I will check with Matt once again, but the Township had initially proposed this as a one-time offer, but I will defer to him and if you would kindly give me your phone number, I will check with him next week and I'll call you back.
Okay, you want it there right now?
Well, go ahead. 4872?
Yes.
Okay. The address?
43 Savage. Your name again, sir?
Charles Reavis. It's R-E-A-V-I-S-N-VICTOR-I-S.
Great. Thanks. So you needed some time to think about it. It's confusing, I get it. And we were confused about how the zoning ever even came to be this way.
It was that way when we bought the house.
Sure.
Okay, thanks a lot.
So much. If there's nothing else under general discussion, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I've gotta give it to Commissioner Atchison, but I'll take support from Commissioner Bud. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned. Happy birthday, Travis!